I'd like to call the City Council regular meeting to order on Tuesday, March 19th, 2013. We're going to have a go-ahead and have an invocation by Jonathan Clem with Jericho Way Ministries and his wife Celestine.
Bless the Lord. Thank you so much for the opportunity today, Mayor Price, to be with you. It's an honor and a pleasure to meet Mayor Price, and we had already been praying for him and for the success of the council and the growth of the Maricopa community. As Teddy Roosevelt said, "No community is healthy where it is ever necessary to distinguish one politician from his fellows because he's honest." Unquote. It's not enough that a public official should be honest. No amount of honesty will avail if he's not also brave and wise. Leadership requires two virtues that seem very simple until they become very inconvenient: honesty and courage. All of you have earned the right to be here today by winning the trust of the Maricopa people. But along with that honor comes duties of humility, integrity, and public service. So let's settle our hearts for just a moment as we invoke the presence and the wisdom of God in prayer. Please bow your heads.
We call upon you, Almighty God, and thank you for the city of Maricopa, the families, the government, its businesses, its schools, its churches, its art and entertainment, and its media. We thank you for Mayor Price, the members of the town council, and their advisors. You have brought this city together in a short time, and we have already seen good times and hardships in our community. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, peace and joy in their personal lives and families. I pray for their protection from any hurt, harm, or danger, and we come against any confusion, personal compromise, and any curses spoken against this land, people, or leaders of this community. May the God of peace be with us. Heavenly Father, we call upon you for your blessings in this community. Therefore, we ask that you bring healthy jobs and businesses here to further establish this city on a firm foundation. We ask that you give this team wisdom and understanding in the making of their budgets. May they have your revelation and insight to bring about change and growth while being fair to the existing businesses, contracts, and groups. We pray for our neighbors like the Occhin Community, Casa Grande, and the Phoenix Metropolitan area, that they would all prosper and be healthy, even as our thoughts, emotions, and decisions are healthy. We pray the walls of separation between races, history, and color will be broken down, and the unity of love will grow in its place. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders of your people. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us, and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. Father, renew us with the strength of your presence. Grant us favor, Lord, in your Pinal County, in Arizona, and the nation. I pray that you would bless each one tonight in their assignments, planning, and execution. Thank you for hearing and answers our prayers. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. I'd like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May be seated. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Move to roll call, please.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Chapados.
Here.
Councilwoman Gussi.
Here.
Councilmember Kimball.
Here.
Councilmember Potter.
Present.
Vice Mayor Farrell.
Here.
Mayor Price.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a call.
Great. Thank you very much. I have no proclamations, knowledge, or words at this time, so move into item four on the report from the mayor. At this time, I have a few things to touch on. First thing is that we had the opportunity to go to the Art on the Veranda here at the Duke here this past weekend. It was a great opportunity to see a lot of the local artists and artisans of the city of Maricopa. I believe it attracted a great crowd, and it was the first one, so we look forward to many more of those along the way, and I think that was a great experience. Saw some things that I didn't know could be done or created, so I was very impressed. Very impressed. Also, want to touch base on the Washington, D.C. trip. Vice Mayor Farrell and Councilmember Brown and others also mentioned this. One of the things that we do every year is we try and make sure that we do all our power to save money, and in that process, we try and utilize, kill two birds with one stone, so to speak. In that process, we went to the National League of Cities and Towns Conference this week. Vice Mayor Farrell was there attending a transportation summit, which happened to be just prior to, and it allowed us to take some time away from that and go and visit a lot of our federal authorities, i.e. our Arizona delegation. One of the things that we are trying to accomplish here, as you know, and have been doing so for a very long time, is we're trying to get this 347 overpass built. And in the process, we've run into a few ups and downs along the way. This has been a priority of the council for as long as the council has been here. Say it again?
Day one.
Since day one, and so it really is important. But one of the things we were faced with was that we were going to, they've changed the way they do business in Washington, and that can be a good thing or a bad thing. And in that process, one of the things they were threatening to take away from us was our NEPA clearance. That's an environmental clearance that allows us to build the overpass. In that process, we were very hesitant as to know what we would be able to accomplish, and so one of the things we decided to do was build a coalition to go back to D.C. with. And one of the things we were able to accomplish in this coalition is we were able to have the privilege of having the Occhin Tribal Council represented there as we met with Victor Mendez, who was a former director of ADOT. And this is really, really important. I hope you understand how crucial and key that was. We had the coalition of our city council, the county supervisor, we had also another former mayor, Kelly Anderson, the first mayor of Maricopa, first elected mayor of Maricopa. And in that process, we were able to have a discussion with him. Councilwoman Gussi was there, and we were able to finally get some clarification. One of the things that we've done here is we've broken this project into multiple phases. And one of the things that we walked away with is that, first, it's important to note that they had over 200 requests for meetings with Victor Mendez and FHWA. He accepted 16. We were one of those 16, and in that process, one of the other things that occurred was that we were able to discuss with him and with FHWA on what the process was moving forward. What they said is, aside from a few other minor details that we've got to work out and road bumps to overcome, basically, he told us that if we could get one of the phases accomplished, we would now be in line for federal funding. We'd be considered shovel-ready. This is huge, and so I hope that you understand that this is the reason why we go to D.C., is to talk with our federal officials. We were able to visit pretty much almost all of our congressmen and our senators in this, and they are very much on board with the project. So again, I think that this is going to be a very exciting year for the city of Maricopa, and I hope that we'll be able to accomplish one of these phases here, hopefully this year, and get us moving forward and in line for these grants that we need to receive so that we can accomplish the whole project. Again, the whole project is somewhere in the neighborhood of $70, $75 million, so it's a big undertaking to deal with and something that we can't do by ourselves. So we really need a lot of help from our regional partners, and so again, many thanks to Occhin for going with us on this. So that's my Washington, D.C. report. Councilwoman Gussi, did you have anything you'd like to add to that on the FHWA trip?
No, just that I left that meeting just as you did. We were very, very glad to hear all our partners within that meeting. Occhin, it was essential to have Occhin there at that table that day. It was an exciting meeting, and I'm very hopeful.
Yeah. I'd like to take a step beyond cautiously optimistic, but it was good. I think we all left feeling that we actually have a path forward now, so we were very excited. The other thing I wanted to touch base on is that tomorrow will be taking place, I'll be attending a press conference down at the Arizona State Legislature. You've heard me talk several times about the tax or transaction privilege tax, the TPT. There's a bill that is going through the House of Representatives right now. It is currently in the Senate. Through, we belong to a group called the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, and in that league of cities and towns, one of the things we do with them is that we subscribe to them so that we have one voice that can lobby the legislature on our behalf. We've been doing the numbers on this, and early on, myself and others have attended just about every single We're back to normal. That's good. One of the things that we're going to deal with is that we've been negotiating with the governor's office. This is her pet bill, and we've been dealing with them. One of the things they've been constantly telling us is they don't believe our numbers. Well, we have a big problem with that because our numbers are set pretty much in stone as it's a budget that rolls year after year. The Arizona State Legislature is a little different in the fact that they're talking about numbers that they don't know about, and so they are anticipating. Well, thank goodness for the Joint Legislative Budget Committee. They sent out a fabulous eight- or nine-page document that basically destroys their argument, but in that process, they moved in all this negotiations, we had a press conference scheduled for today, and they asked us that we would cancel that press conference and that we see this bill was being held up in Kavanaugh's committee, which is, which one is it? Is it not Ways and Means, but Appropriations? In Kavanaugh's committee for appropriations, the governor's office got impatient, so they did what's called a striker. And the striker is they take the original bill and they put it back into another bill that's already beyond that committee in the Senate. Well, the problem with that is they promised us that it would have all of our inclusions, all the things that we've been negotiating good faith for. That did not happen. So it is back to the original bill, and with that, as you'll see on the screen here, if you look at the fiscal years in the next two to three years, you'll see that the reduction to the Maricopa city budget is 20% under this proposed bill. Now, I don't know about you, but if you looked at your personal incomes and knew that in two years it was going to reduce by 20%, I would start to think that you would already start making very drastic cuts. So we have some hope here still in the fact that we still have the ability to lobby our legislators, but I wanted to let you know that this press conference will take place tomorrow at 1:30 in front of the league office, and if you get the opportunity, please, 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 please write or contact your state senator, who happens to be Al Melvin from this district, or Representative Quasman, or Representative Smith, and please tell them that, as it stands now, this original bill, as it's written, is destructive to cities and towns, and it will absolutely kill us. So the numbers don't lie. They're right there in front of you, 20%. That only translates to one thing, and that is a reduction in services, a reduction in things that you expect from us as a city that you are trying to thrive in and build a business in, but it's very destructive. So with that, I'll kind of leave that, but let you know that please, please, please contact your representative or senator on this. Okay? Great. That's all I have at this time from the mayor's report, and I'll move over to the city manager.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I do have a couple announcements tonight. First, want to make sure that everybody knows and is reminded about this annual salsa festival that's on Saturday. This is our ninth annual salsa festival. Hours have been extended this year from the previous year, so it's 2:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at Picana Park, and there's lots of fun food, entertainment, so we hope to see you out there, and hopefully the weather cooperates, and it's a great day for everybody. So please join us for that celebration. The second announcement I have is to ask residents to support our ongoing recruitment for retail. I know that retail's a very important thing for our citizens, and we'd like you to help us by completing a survey on the city's website that will help us provide important information on resident shopping patterns, what it is that you're looking for, your preferences, and that'll help us target and attract certain retailers. The survey responses are confidential, so don't worry about that. Your name and contact information will not be shared with anybody, but we encourage you to please participate in that by visiting the city's website and going to the Economic Development webpage to let your voice be heard. And then my third announcement is to invite Economic Development Specialist Jaclyn Aaron's Cook on up to the podium to do our Shop Local program.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. The Shop Local program is one of our ways to raise awareness of local business offerings and also serves to encourage and reward local Maricopa shoppers. Signing up is quick and easy and free, and can be done at shoplocal.maricopa-az.gov as shown up on the screen. So this month's winner is Samara Casper. So she has just won $100 that she can use at any of the participating businesses, which is listed on the website, and continue shopping and helping our local economy grow. So thank you very much, and I want to encourage everyone to keep shopping local.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Anything further? Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to open up the call to the public. This is the opportunity in which you may approach the podium, address your counsel, and typically, there aren't typically responses that happen in this timeframe, but we'd love to hear from you. So Mike, please.
Mayor Price. Hi, Vice Mayor Farrell, city council members, city staff. I'm here this evening to represent the Chamber of Commerce. My name is Mike Ritchie. My address, 21542 North John Wayne Parkway. I've got three items of information this evening. First and foremost is that we're happy to announce that we have hired Charlie Deaton as the new interim president/CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Deaton began his career in the Chamber of Commerce Management as an assistant director in the Greenville, Mississippi Chamber of Commerce in 1969. Since that time, and for seven years, he's served as the vice president of Communications and Community Development for the Kentucky State Chamber of Commerce. He later took a position as CEO of the Paducah, Kentucky Chamber of Commerce, where he was responsible not only for the management of the chamber, but the director of economic development. He was in this role in economic development that brought him to Arizona in 1989, where he served as the manager of the Business Development Division of the Arizona Department of Commerce under Governor Mofford's administration. In 1992, he was named president and CEO of the Mesa Chamber of Commerce, where he served until his retirement in December of 2010. Charlie is a graduate of the U.S. Chamber Institute for Organizational Management, University of Georgia, where he would later serve as the U.S. Chambers Institute Board of Regents at the University of Arizona. He's served as the president of the Mississippi Chamber of Commerce Executives Association and on the boards of the Kentucky Association Chamber Executives, as well as the Arizona Chamber of Commerce Executives Association, and the Western Association of Chambers of Commerce. We're very pleased to have Charlie on board with us at this point. Second item of information is that Mr. Chris Watka, who is the vice president of Finance and Administration for the Pinal County, Pinal Community College District, which is, we all know as Central Arizona College, his areas of responsibility include all financial transactions, including applicable state, federal audits, facilities, and construction district-wide, all of the information, technology, purchasing, budgeting, and all grant accounting. He holds a master's of business administration from St. Xavier University and is a certified public accountant. He joined the district in April of 2010, and I'm pleased to announce that he has now joined our board of the Chamber of Commerce as our alternate position. The last item of information I have for you this evening is that the Chamber OAS, the Organizational Assessment and Search Committee, is currently switching into the interview process for that president and CEO position. That's it for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And please state your name.
I'm Judith Lang-Zemont. I live on O. Sullivan Drive in Rancho El Dorado, and I'm here tonight representing Maricopa's entire creative community. We are uniform in the belief that a vibrant, visible, flourishing arts community is an expected and central feature of a fully-fledged modern metropolis. Though Maricopa is now 10 years past in corporation, we're not there yet artistically. So on our conglomerate behalf, I present a petition containing two requests that will go a long way towards getting there. This actually follows up an initiative begun last summer by a former city council member to initiate a Maricopa Arts Council. Up to now, most Maricopa arts enterprises have been single-focus operations, essentially sponsored by a not-to-be-denied passion on the part primarily of one person. Within the last three years, these separate passions have borne amazing fruit for Maricopa. We've seen the birth of a theater troupe. Thank you, Carrie Vargas. We have seen the flourishing of one dance academy and the opening of another. We've seen sold-out public concerts by Maricopa Music Circle, our city's original chamber orchestra. We've seen visual artists finally gaining a community platform via the Maricopa Artist Spotlight showcases, which go into their third edition next month under the leadership of Bonnie Del Turco. Bonnie. And we have seen the resounding success of last weekend's first artisan show, Art on the Veranda. Especially over the past year, we've shown that the arts in conglomerate are a true force in Maricopa, an engine for the city that increases commerce, propels sustained attention with bubbling enthusiasm, and enhances the city's overall definition, both socially and culturally, on a regional and statewide basis. We only have to look at our close neighbors, Chandler, Mesa, and Tempe, to see how art scenes in those cities raise dollars, add luster, enhance cosmopolitan atmosphere, and elevate reputation. Art matters. The arts touch us, they move us, they enlighten us in ways that are largely beyond the purview of mere words. The arts are not recreation. The arts are not an add-on element. They are woven into the essential fabric of a city's life, and we creative types are a true resource for the city. We know what it means to imagine, and imagine big, and we know how to make our visions real. We are asking in this petition for two actions that will put all the arts into Maricopa's continuing consciousness. We ask the city to recognize our force, celebrate our accomplishments, and tap us as a real resource in planning objectives and fulfilling municipal enterprises. We know our city's charter does not include the power to found an arts council. So the petition we bring forward today requests two outcomes. Number one, issue an official sanction in support of the founding of a Maricopa Arts Council. And number two, that the city shall institute a standing committee on the arts to invite in the perspective of Maricopa's creative community to advise on municipal matters on a continuing basis. The petition states just what I have spoken here. Our petition is signed by 97 Maricopa citizens who are also active artists, and this was done on only two occasions within one week. We like to be efficient with our time also. Our group of artists includes painters, writers, sculptors, sketchers, actors, directors, photographers, musicians, choreographers, wood carvers, lithographers, fabric artists, mosaicists, quilters, poets, artists in glass, and other fragile and sturdy media. You name it, we live right here in Maricopa. We are waiting to be harnessed by the city and for the city's good. This will elevate all of us because the rising tide lifts all boats. I have the petition here. I can read you the text if you want to hear it. Otherwise, I think I'm close to my five minutes.
Yes, if you'd like to just pass that. Are you going to give that to us?
Yes.
Go ahead and proceed and give that to us, and I'm going to put you in contact with Paul Bach here. Since you told us that you would be coming, we've actually started talking behind the scenes a little bit on some of the thoughts and ideas that we'd like to get together with you on, so thank you very much.
Thank you, and I would also like to thank, I would like, I would like to thank all the members of the arts community that came down here tonight because warm bodies make a difference to the city council. Would you all stand up, please?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the arts community for coming forward on this. As you mentioned, we have done some investigation at the staff level, and just about every other city in the valley does have some sort of arts representation, so what I'm going to do is ask if it's okay with councils, ask staff to do a little bit of research and possibly bring something back to a future work session to weigh in, work with this group, and find out how we can start to infuse the arts into Maricopa. We have some exciting facilities, as everybody knows, coming on board, and it would be great to marry the arts to those facilities, so we will be doing some stuff and bringing it back to council if that's what council would like to see.
Yes. Counsel?
Yes.
Sounds unanimous. Thank you. Thank you very much, Judith. Please.
Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Tom Baxter. I'm the executive director of the Center for, the Maricopa Center for Entrepreneurship, and I wanted to take this opportunity to let you know a little bit of what's happened in the last 30 days. We have official launch. We do have an office. We're located in Desert Greens Professional Suites next to the library, two doors down from Supervisor Smith. Very good place to be, good company. We are now, MC is now a member, an active member in good standing, of the Arizona Business Incubation Association, AZBI. And in addition, we are pursuing other appropriate memberships and associations for our community and for our incubator. Although it wasn't the original intention for us to have begun yet to pursue any clients, I want to let you know that we have had people knocking on the door, and in fact, I have already spent about three hours in pre-incubation counseling with members of your community who are looking for opportunities to expand their business. And I can say to you with a relative amount of confidence that a month from now, I will be telling you that we have, that we have associates. Very much looking forward to that. In our search, as we're searching for mentors within the community, we have found many people who are interested, but we have also been receiving inquiries from people as far away as Scottsdale who would like to bring their expertise into Maricopa as a mentor. So the feelers are going out, and there's, something is happening. This is a very fertile environment, and people recognize that. Now, I wanted to let you know that our first event is occurring April 2nd. It will be at the Dunes. It'll be from 3:00 to 5:00. I sent out, in the afternoon, now, I sent out a blast yesterday. As of close of business today, I have 30 reservations for attendance at our event. Our event is simply entitled, and an introduction, "The Maricopa Center for Entrepreneurship." There is a tremendous hunger, and there's a tremendous need, and we are here to fill it, and I am just genuinely honored and excited to be able to do this with you and for you. At this event, we are going to have six clients of the incubator sister incubators, those from Phoenix and actually as far north as Flagstaff, who will be on a roundtable discussion, on a roundtable panel available for questions from the public to see, to understand exactly how an incubator will affect their business. Alongside those six clients who have experienced the incubator environment will be two of our over-80 mentors who will also be there to address questions from the public, and in addition, we have an angel investor group represented from Tucson. So I think it will be a very, very informative and a very lively discussion. My biggest concern at the moment is that we may blow out of our venue. So thank you very much. I appreciate the time and look forward to the future.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Like to approach the council at this time. Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the call to the public, move on to items 7.1 and 7.2, the minutes. and 7.2, the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
Motion.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. On to section eight. This is a public hearing. 8.1, PH 13-04, the mayor and city council should hear public comment on proposed minor tax amendment to zoning Article 22-signed provisions, excuse me, case TXT 13-01. This is an addendum to the existing Article 22-signed provisions, section 2210, exceptions B4, by adding the words "city-sponsored" to prior events, prior to events, excuse me. If you'd like to approach at this time and discuss this topic and this topic only, you may do so, as the public hearing is officially open. Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this item and move to item nine on the consent agenda. Counsel, may I have a motion to approve consent agenda, please?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And then on to the regular agenda. The first one is an ordinance. It's item 10.1, ordinance 13-04. Again, ordinance dealing back to this public hearing and mending the Article 22, section 2210, B4 of the Maricopa zoning code regarding exempted signage and providing for severability and the effective date thereof. Discussion in action. Kazi.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As Mayor mentioned, this is a minor text amendment to sign ordinance, Article 22 is just an addendum. We are adding two words, city sponsor for the banners and the festivals that we have in our city for the three special events. With that, I'm open to any question you may have. This is something is just going to be added. We have an ordinance and also through resolution.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions on this item? Seeing none, I'd accept a motion. We have a motion to approve. Oh, yeah, a motion to approve. And can I have a second, please? Second, there's a motion and second, and we will move to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gussi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Farrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Potter?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapados?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimball?
Yes.
Mayor Price?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Kazi. Item 10.2, mayor and city council should discuss and possibly take action on approving a name for the Multi-Generation and Aquatic Center in Regional Park. Discussion in action. Ms. Campbell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Tonight, we have before you the naming of the Multi-Generational and Aquatic Center in Regional Park. Just wanted to go over a little bit about how we did the nomination process. Basically, we solicited information or names from the public. So it said, any citizen with a suggestion or a name was able to submit it through our communications and marketing division. Or we also had this via on the web so that people could go ahead and give their naming suggestion electronically. The opportunity was also promoted through city electronic media to solicit ideas as well. Submissions were reviewed for consistency with the naming guidelines in which city council had passed in a previous council meeting. And herein, as the marketing partnership policy previously approved by city council. Just a little bit of a naming guideline refresher, which council went ahead and approved. Names that are considered, can reflect many different things in a community. One of them would be an adjoining subdivision or community area, prominent geographical feature or location, historical event of significance, an individual, group, or organization. And it could be also a deceased individual or a living individual via donation or marketing partnership agreement that we could name the park or multi-gen after. The process, we had 25 participants that gave suggestions. Efforts were made to generate marketing partnership, however, we did not get any responses for that. We did an internal review conducted for consistency with the guidelines. So we wanted to make sure a lot of the names fell within the guidelines in which council had previously approved. Names were presented to the Parks, Rec, and Library Advisory Committee. And we also took it to the newly-formed City Council Marketing and Communications Subcommittee as well. Recommended name format, some of the things that we wanted to do was, we wanted to keep the name consistent for both the multi-gen and the park. We look at this as a complex. This is a destination. You have a 52,000-square-foot building, big aquatic center, and a 94-acre park. We look at it as one whole unit, as a place where people are going to come to gather. So having a name for both creates continuity and will not cause confusion. So it wouldn't be like saying you're going to, you know, the Maricopa Multi-Gen Center and let's say, you know, the desert park, things like that. It had continuity and it was similar. Creates a true regional destination. Obviously, it is located here in Maricopa, and it will definitely be a point of pride for the community. But we're also hoping to attract people from outside Maricopa. We're hoping to host big tournaments, have festivals. Again, we heard from the arts community, hopefully, bringing in some jazz festivals, arts festivals, things like that. So we wanted to have it to have recognition, not just in Maricopa, but around the valley and the state of Arizona as well. And also, too, the ease of marketing and branding materials. How does it sound when it rolls off the tongue? How does it sound when you're answering the phone? How does it look on a T-shirt or a business card or letterhead? Things like that. So we came up with basically five recommendations, and we came up with our top. And again, both of these names, or all five of the names, were vetted through both the Parks Recreation and Library Committee, as well as the Marketing Communications Subcommittee made up of several council members as well, and the mayor. And these are the names that we are putting forward today. Our first top naming recommendation is Copper Sky, Multi-Gen and Aquatic Center in Copper Sky Regional Park. Also, what came out of the Marketing Communications Subcommittee was actually tying it all together, so calling it the Copper Sky Recreation Complex. Because again, a complex means that there are many different amenities to that. So it would mean the park, the aquatic center, as well as the multi-gen center. It references the beautiful sunsets. I think if everybody has lived here for a while, or even when people come to visit, you cannot miss the beautiful sunsets. And what a great place to see those sunsets is the city of Maricopa. References Arizona's mining history. We obviously have a rich mining history here in Arizona, and it was a lot of commerce back in the day as well. It is not duplicative of other community facilities. What we tried to do is, a lot of the names that were given for suggestions, we kind of went ahead and vetted and looked to see if names were also used in other communities. Not necessarily ones that were very far away, but ones that were very close. Because we don't want to have that like, oh, well, you're going to come to Desert Vista Park. There's also a Desert Vista Park in Chandler, things like that. Or there's a high school named after that. So we wanted to make sure that the name has not already previously been used, so we don't have any confusion among people. And again, Maricopa making us stand out. Also, positive regional branding opportunities. Again, having a name that's elegant, having a name that's easy to say, having a name that represents something that people can relate to. And when you think about it, everyone does remark on how beautiful the sunsets are here in Arizona and Maricopa as well. Second name was Desert Oasis. The pros to that were, it does allude to a water element and recreation. Has talked about, Maricopa's been referred to as the desert in, or the oasis in the desert. Con was, it was really not necessarily distinctive to Maricopa. There was some references in some old history books to that as well. But again, it didn't necessarily spark or make people think of the city of Maricopa. Next was Quail Vista. The pros were that was, we obviously have wildlife in the area, and I think most people have seen the little quail and their families running around. I mean, it invokes a good smile, as Councilmember Brown is doing currently right now.
Yeah, well, as are wild animals.
I guess we don't see too many wild quail, right? And as far as the cons, it doesn't really have a regional brand or appeal. Again, we have quail here in Arizona, and it's in some places. But again, it doesn't necessarily have a regional brand to it. Number four, Astrea Vista. The pros, again, were the reference to stars. That was also a name that council did like or entertain for the Lexington Park. But again, better used in other areas of the city, which was brought up by, it was the vice mayor, saying in such areas as the Gin Site. And also, vistas are not necessarily in the community. So again, it might be where Astrea may be used better in different parts of Maricopa. The last was Rio Bravo. And that does reference John Wayne, as we obviously have John Wayne Parkway, we have the Duke. But again, many of the same references already exist here in the city and in the region. So you don't want to overuse a certain brand or certain names and things like that. So basically, the next step, following council selection of the name, we would work with a graphic design team to develop logos, colors, signage, and marketing materials. Also, there's opportunity for partnership for design and inspiration sought out from the auction Indian community representatives. And then the designs would be bought to the Parks, Rec, and Library Committee, as well as the Council Marketing and Communications Subcommittee for review and input. And then obviously, it would be great that we have something to show to council. So I will entertain any questions or comments.
Counsel, questions? Thoughts?
Just a quick note, Mayor. Just wanted to know that there was a really close sixth place for the name of the complex. And it just barely missed a top five. But it was one of my personal favorites, and it was to be called the Fisher Price Recreation Complex. And I really thought that had a nice touch to it.
I was trying to get my name on something. Come on.
But we found out that there's already a trademark on it. We can't use it.
Such a bummer. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other questions or thoughts?
I sat in on that marketing committee, and, you know, I've always enjoyed the Astrea Gen, but it's obviously a word that is not pronounced right many a times, and it doesn't exactly roll off the tongue if not pronounced properly. But I agree, I really like the Copper Sky. And we went down to the, if you bring the slide back up, that original slide, which talked about the complex, I think it was that first one. There you go. That Copper Sky Recreation Complex, I really like that. I think it rolls off the tongue. I think it invokes colors. But it just provides a potential for logos and other things. So I, my personal favorite is the Copper Sky Recreation Complex.
I agree. And when we were having that discussion, the three of us, Councilmember Chapados as well, it was neat, the way that conversation went, to where we were discussing it, and then we started throwing out names. And then somebody said Copper Sky Recreation Complex, and all of our eyes just lit up. I mean, that's it. You know, that's, that's, that's the one right there. But it was a good meeting. There was a good networking in that meeting. I agree with you, Mayor. I like the name of this.
Counsel, Chapados.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to Jennifer and Brenda and staff and the PRL Committee and all the folks that submitted names. We had some really creative ideas. But I too enjoyed the process, and Copper Sky does click for me.
Counsel, other thoughts, concerns, questions?
Mayor, I'd like to move to approve agenda item 10.2.
I have a motion. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
You got it.
I'm sorry. The Copper Sky Recreation Complex.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second for the Copper Sky Recreation Complex. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much for being here tonight. And can I have a motion to dismiss?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're done. You're out of here. See, I told you I was trying to turn it over. You leave.